We would like to go ahead and get started tonight. We thank each and every one of you for coming out. Okay, the Pine Bluff City Council meeting of September the 16th is now called to order. Do you have a roll call please?
I'm Mr. Brown.
Here.
I'm Mr. Easterly.
Here.
I'm Mr. Staley.
Here.
I'm Mr. Walker.
Here.
I'm Mr. Boyd.
Here.
I'm Mr. Ryan.
Here.
I'm Mr. May.
Here.
I'm Mr. Hope.
Here.
In this time, I would like to ask for prayers for Alderman Easterly's mother. She's kind of taken the turn for the worse. And so he was here earlier but had to leave out to take care of his mother. So, please keep working in the prayers, please. Amen. And moving right on, each of you have a copy of the minutes for September the 3rd, 2013?
Some who?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion as been moved and seconded that the minutes for September the 3rd, 2013 be approved. Any comments? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are good. Moving on to committee reports, ordinances, and resolutions of the Senate?
Yes, Mayor, the orders, resolutions committee met prior to the meeting. We will take the following action. Item number one will be read for the third and final reading. Number two for the second reading. Number three will be finished. Number four, we will complete. Number five has been pulled from the agenda. We will have a meeting on that later in the month to discuss before it comes back to the agenda. And items six through 12 are resolutions and they will all be completed. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Ways and Means, Alderman Brown?
Yes, Mayor, we have one budget adjustment that was presented. Everybody has at their place. It involves a retirement of an employee in the street department with 45.5 days accumulated sick leave and 4.5 days of vacation leave. The total amount is $6,636. It's coming from within the street department budget. I would accept this budget adjustment.
Agreed.
A motion has been properly moved and seconded that a budget adjustment for 45 and a half days accumulated sick leave and 4 and a half days of vacation time is an amount of $6,636. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You note? Motion passed.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the bills of the city be approved. This time, for discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any comments? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Walker, over to you. Thank you, man. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Walker?
Over, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alderman Ratties?
We had a meeting. We had moved it, rescheduled it to another day. Some more issues that came up with that. And, you know, I would like to see if, another thing I would, I would like to see if we can, as a city council, discuss the naming of a building or a street or get a monument in honor of Mr. Monroe Isador. We need to see what we can do at the City Council of Leaders in order to bring good and honor for Mr. Isador, though he's 107, and the city of Pine Bluff and the Isador family. We need to kind of discuss that, the monument, something.
Thank you, in my report.
Thank you, sir. Development and planning, Alderman Walker?
No report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Traffic and radiation, Alderman Brown?
Officially, no report. Mr. Johnson, would you like to come to us and tell us something about it?
Okay, very good. Officially, no report, but may I would like to say this. In lieu of the things that we're doing for our city, in lieu of the fact that we are not progressing as fast as I would like them see to, see us progress, I think every month we come over here with new ordinances and resolutions. And I think that we're putting too many on the books. I know everybody's going to say you can't get enough, but I think we're putting too many on the books. I think we need to start to do things that's going to mainstream Pine Bluff development versus every month coming in here and doing new resolutions and doing new ordinances. I just think we need to start doing things. If this is normal, the way city government works, then we need to change it within ourselves because we need to start doing things that make us grow. And I just think, it appears to a lot of my constituents that we come in every month and all we do is do an ordinance and resolutions. And they say like, "That's all y'all do?" It's like, I think what they don't really understand is there are a lot of things that happen within those ordinance and resolutions, but I have to repeat what I've heard, and that is that we do too many ordinances and resolutions. We need to start focusing on things that makes Pine Bluff grow versus just putting a new law into, onto the books. Thank you very much.
Sir, Administration, Alderman Scott?
Yes, Mayor, I have a report. The committee met this week, last week, and we had one item on the agenda. We had an appeal for a two-day suspension for someone over in the...
City Inspector's Office.
And because of the lack of documentation, we reinstated those days. And I guess we need to vote on that to...
Did you motion something?
Well, I can make a motion that we reinstate those two days for Mr. Hart and George Hart.
Second.
A motion has been properly moved and seconded that the reinstatement for Mr. George Hart, the floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's my report.
Public Safety, Alderman Easterly and Peter Powell, I did not need to sell the number four. Okay, sir. Okay, on to, um, hold the session.
Mayor, we have an ordinance amending section 29 days two of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Pine Bluff regarding event centers, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending section 29 days two of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Pine Bluff regarding event centers.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that a ordinance amending section 29 two of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Pine Bluff regarding event centers. The floor is now open for discussion.
Did this go to committee, was it, fully discussed and approved by the committee?
Oh, yeah.
I just didn't recall. Thank you.
Hearing that, all in favor of this, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mayor, we have an ordinance to close, a vacant, and vacate certain streets and alleys located east of Apple Street and north of West 34th Avenue within the subdivision of the southwest quarter, of the southeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of section 18. Township six south, range nine west of the P., period M., period, in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whatever.
Yeah. That's what it said, seriously.
An ordinance to close and vacate certain streets and alleys located east of Apple Street and north of West 34th Street Avenue within the subdivision of the southwest quarter, of the southeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of section 18. Township six south, range nine west of the M. in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and complete this one.
Second.
Check.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded that we suspend the rules and read the ordinance to close and vacate certain streets and alleys located east of Apple Street. I will not read the full heading of that. It's okay. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, roll call.
Just the same person?
That's the property where they're building the new Edgewood School, Watson Chapel School.
Okay, do we have roll call please?
I'm Mr. Brown.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Staley.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Walker.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
I'm Mr. May.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Hope.
An ordinance to close and vacate certain streets and alleys located east of Apple Street and north of West 34th Avenue within the subdivision...
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that the ordinance to close and vacate certain streets and alleys located east of Apple Street and north of West 34th. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance to close and vacate an alley located south of Pullen Street and east of Sycamore Street within Rowell's Edition, Block 1, in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, up for the second reading.
An ordinance to close and vacate an alley located south of Pullen Street and east of Sycamore Street within Rowell's Edition, Block 1, in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move to spend the rules, place an ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the rules be suspended for the ordinance to close and vacate an alley located south of Pullen Street and east of Sycamore Street. Any discussions?
Have all the terms have been made for this? Because I, I didn't really go look at it. Have all the avenues been taken with this?
It's been to the Planning Commission and it's, it's the Covenant Recovery over there on Reinhardt and Pullen, or by the railroad track. They're looking at adding some additional housing in there for the residents in there. And the Planning Commission already approved it. Mr. McKenzie, I thought he was going to be here.
Any residential disamembers?
No.
Right there when you come across the railroad track, what it brought to, we didn't get none of the vegetables, you know?
I mean, yeah, the vegetables.
Nothing, they got no, they got no little shop there.
You got Sheila Design in there, you got Lamp Cam, you got Covenant Recovery, and you got the...
No breaks you place, probably.
Yeah. They're using the land already, they already cleaned it up and all.
Okay, and that street is located, is that your way, that alley?
As soon as you cross that railroad track to your left, going north. Going west.
You ain't going north.
Going west. Going west.
There's a half ton of stuff.
Okay, any other...
They're doing a good job in the community, I mean, they're, you know, I'm just glad we suspended the rules on it to not even hold them up in any longer.
Do we have roll call please?
I'm Mr. Brown.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Staley.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Walker.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Boyd.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
I'm Mr. May.
Aye.
An ordinance to close and vacate an alley located south of Pullen Street and east of Sycamore Street within Rowell's Edition, Block 1, in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the ordinance to close and vacate an alley located south of Pullen Street and east of Sycamore Street. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah. Moving on, we have an ordinance granting exclusive ambulance franchise and declaring an emergency up for the first reading. We'd like to just read title only because everybody's had an opportunity to review this in committee.
An ordinance granting an executive exclusive ambulance franchise and declaring an emergency.
Move to spend the rules, place an ordinance on the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise declaring an emergency. Any discussion? Roll call.
Okay, you're doing the emergency right now, you're not...
Don't suspend.
You don't, don't suspend the rules.
Do we have a roll call? Roll call please.
I'm Mr. Brown.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Staley.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Walker.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Ryan.
Highway reservations, okay.
I'm Mr. May.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Hope.
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise and declaring an emergency.
Move to further spend the rules, place an ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we continue to suspend the rules, through the ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise and declaring an emergency. Any discussion?
We still on, we still on it. Okay, we're not on the record.
Oh, did he end yet?
Roll call please.
I'm Mr. Brown.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Staley.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Walker.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Ryan.
Aye, we reservation.
I'm Mr. May.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Hope.
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise and declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that the ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise and declaring an emergency. The floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir.
I had to walk out and there was a speaker speaking just before we started the meeting. And I, if I understand that, she was against it. Was that correct?
Oh, over there.
Yeah, she was against it. And that, that gave me some reservations about it because she used that term as we use this term, exclusive, you know, that's given exclusive rights to something. And I'm, I'm kind of with her on that, you know, given exclusive rights to something. I don't know what it may, may do to us later on.
I think our city attorney might be able to address this process.
Alderman Brown, what happened? We submit, we requested proposals to be submitted in, I want to say it was maybe June the 20th. We ran it in the newspaper, we also put it online, and we also put it on the television channel. And we received actually two proposals at that time. And once we received those proposals, we had, we got a committee which is listed on, as part of your attachment, to review the, the two proposals that were submitted. And then they recommend that easy ambulance service be the service that continues to provide service for the city of Pine Bluff.
Mayor, that was, that was my, that was my concern because we, we have a committee here that they had selected to go through these applications and the process. And that's why I was going to bring that up because she wanted to answer.
My question, I guess, is, who did the selection of the committee or is that, is that somebody within the council or I didn't know that?
It was through the council. Actually, it was myself and the Chief Howe, and we had someone from MECA get together and determine the people that would be best to evaluate the proposals that were submitted.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor, you know, I had some questions about it as well. And just, well, my first question was, until I went on and read it in the back, was lines five through eight, the committee selected. Now, I see how they selected committee now. And then, it's, it's the names in the back, and then, and from nine through 12, where it says based on the recommendation of the ambulance selection committee. And I went in the back and I seen some names and I called a few of them and I asked them, you know, because I was kind of curious, how did they come up with the, that, you know, the selection like that? And I agree with Mr. McCourt, they are high. But at the same time, the people that, someone on this committee, you know, I can take their judgment because they really studied it and, and they gave me an opinion of it. Now, I agree with, I mean, it's, across town, it's real high in, in ambulance. But, but based on what they told me and their opinion, I'm, I'm going to go along with their opinion. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Do we have only one company you said that made a bid?
Two.
Two.
Southern Parramatta.
Southern Parramatta.
Also submitted.
Okay, yeah.
Mayor, at one time, Carol, maybe it was less than I know that they can, like, get insurance per year. I don't know if this company can say, and, you know, for a person that may be setting up in this service for them in one time a year. And if, if they don't have it, if they need something that we can encourage them to make. Because if the person has to make a couple trips to hospital, it could be devastating at most times if you go, once you're in that program.
I agree, I agree with you.
Something that I want to make, so Carol, maybe we can ask the city attorney to check with them.
I would do that.
Yes, sir.
One of the first things on the evaluation list, it says Southern's base rates were a lot more expensive than Easy's.
Those are...
And there were a lot of other things in there that they had questions concerning the Southern bid that they weren't sure that they had...
Where's Sheldon, I don't know.
I want, ooh, Braklin.
Braklin.
I want this Braklin.
But they also too, even their base rates were more expensive than Easy, but then they had additional ancillary charges that were, that are part of Easy's normal rate, a regular rate. So, you were going to have some add-ons from that. So, if you, if you evaluate that or review that, you probably see that they're not a lot of cost for this price for themselves. Yes, sir.
I, thank you very much. I do understand that, but I think it's sort of like insurance. Geico and Progressive and all of them, they tell you every day, we can say you're $498 a year. And once you get in there for a half a year, you lost some money, they go up on you. So, this could also do the same. They could tell you that we'll, they could show you that we're cheaper, but by the time you get in there, they could go up. I see Alderman Staley shaking his head, Charlie.
This is a contractual arrangement, and they can't, they can't go up on that.
Just like your rights and everything.
Right.
I think, I think it would still be good because of the fact that, you know, they do have exclusive rights to consider people that may not be...
Oh, yeah.
...people to pay $780 per day for a service.
Right. But the insurance, I think that'd be good.
They should have the insurance.
Right. Yeah, that'd be great.
That's a good idea. We'll do it.
You know, you know, that's a good idea, and I don't think we need to drop the ball on it, even if they can do a monthly payment on it or something. If we're going to, we got the power to give them exclusive rights to this, we got the power to add in here.
We can't, we can't get into their billing cycle and that, and that kind of stuff. We can't get into...
Well, we, we representing the citizens of Pine Bluff too.
Yeah, but you can't get into their billing cycle. They have a contract here and we can't say they will give this one a payment plan and that a payment plan. That's not part of what we do.
I understand, but we still representing the citizens of Pine Bluff. We got to go for their best interest as well.
I tell you what, you go ask them.
They recommend or suggest that they do it and see if they can put it into the points they offer, but then you're going to get out to tell them how they run their business.
No, we can encourage them like Alderman Walker.
I agree, yes.
We can encourage them because five years pass fast and they'll be up for...
Right.
...a couple contracts, you know, it's not just a good business.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and structures...
The emergency laws.
Move for the emergency clause?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we invoke the emergency clause. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and our structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement.
Where is the city council?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution declaring certain nuisance houses, buildings, and structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have one amendment I need to amend. We have one that needs to come off the list. That was, they purchased a prepared permit. I need to move that we remove this particular one. Move in...
Okay. So, you want to amend?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we amend our resolution number regarding the declaration of certain houses and buildings and amended to remove... Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown is off the list because we certainly don't want to disrespect...
It was three on one.
There you go, page three on one. Any discussion of this on the amendment? Say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the amendment carries. Um, okay.
Mayor, I just, uh, Mr. Bean, Derek Bean, I, um...
Michael Bean.
Michael Bean, okay. Uh, where is that property located around the corner? What is it, uh, right there?
On the left-hand side.
The building is stripped down, Joe, it's just with the...
Right, I know, I know the building is stripped down, it's on the, but it's on the left-hand side going towards, uh, what, right, oh, right.
Straight from the center.
Right. Um, I see it on the list here, and we haven't really had one of this nature as I can remember. It is a commercial site that I see, I haven't seen where it was really, and I saw what they're trying to do with it.
We, we met with Mr. Bean, I think a few months ago, in our committee meeting. If you don't mind, Mayor, can we refer it back to the committee and let us discuss it again there?
Okay.
Okay. So, we need to amend, yes, as well then?
Yes. And we'll bring it back to the committee since it's a commercial property, look at it again, as far as his extensions and so on.
Okay, so you've got an amendment to that, to pull this as well?
I will.
Okay, second?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have an amendment on the floor to pull Mr. Michael Bean's property from the abatement list. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries.
Mayor, I move we adopt the motion as were the two amendments.
Okay. Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we amend a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and structures nuisance and ordering their abatement. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor...
Let me just say to Mr. Bean, I think they'll notify you again if you come back to the Development Planning Committee meeting and we'll talk about what...
Should be addressed.
Yes, yes. And we'll deal with that then.
Okay, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution setting the millage for the fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas it is desired to fix the, you mean, just titles only, Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Okay. A resolution is made in village for the fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution setting the millage for the fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff. The floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor, these are just annual legislation that we need to do to be able to continue the funding for these funds that are required by law.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution setting the millage for the fireman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, for the policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution setting the millage for the policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution setting the millage for the policeman's relief and pension fund for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution setting the millage for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
A resolution setting the millage for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution setting the millage for general purposes as authorized and prescribed by law for the city of Pine Bluff. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing that, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution setting the millage for the operation and maintenance of the Pine Bluff Library.
A resolution setting the millage for the operation and maintenance of the Pine Bluff public library.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution setting the millage for the operation, maintenance of the Pine Bluff public library. The floor is now open for discussion. Floor is not open for discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution directing the mayor to proceed with the rehabilitation renovation of the Joe Thomas Public Safety Building and the National Guard Armory as sites for police department agencies and personnel. Authorizing Patrol Division to be housed in the Pine's Mall, and directing that the bicycle patrol and neighborhood offices be maintained as priorities of the police department.
A resolution directing the mayor to proceed with the rehabilitation and renovation of the Joe Thomas Public Safety Building and the National Guard Armory as sites for police department agencies and personnel. Authorizing the Patrol Division to be housed in the Pine's Mall, and directing that the bicycle patrol and neighborhood offices be maintained as priorities of the police department.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the resolution directing the mayor to proceed with the rehabilitation and renovation of the Joe Thomas Public Safety Building, and the National Guard Armory as sites for police department agencies and personnel. Authorizing the Patrol Division to be housed in Pine's Mall, and directing that the bicycle patrol and neighborhood offices be maintained as priorities of the police department. Floor is not open for discussion, yes sir?
Mayor, uh, council, as you've noticed, we took out the language involving the commitment of the fire department's money. Otherwise it says, I didn't get any, uh, changes.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Thank you. Um, that I know of, it could have happened and I wasn't at a meeting, however, it wasn't made louder enough for me to hear it. And that is nothing has changed since the last time we were here with the same resolution, other than something that he just mentioned of taking out of it. And I'm still with the phase that, um, some month and a half, maybe two months ago, I'm not exactly sure, that we did vote to put the Patrol Division in the Armory building with a sounding vote, and possibly an override to the veto, but that didn't happen. However, the problem I'm having with the situation is that I'm looking at city government is controlled, it's, it's, we're elected by the people. City government is not a private business, it's not a person's business. City government is controlled by the votes of the city council. And it is in my understanding that we did vote to do that, and ever since that time, we've been, something has been shoved down our throat about the Armory building that didn't come through city council properly, and I just can't support anything that this city council didn't officially endorse. And also, um, the thing that we get in citizens in, in Jefferson County and Pine Bluff, of course, and that is that if we were going to not use the Armory building, then why is there such a, another outpour or support from, other than this council, to use the Armory building? And I, and I, and I concur with those people that are talking to me, and you believe, you believe it, they're talking. And it's just no way in the world I could support, uh, something that it appears has been run as though it's a personal business versus, uh, city government business. And I, I think that's what, that's what we had to deal with. I think that it was proudly vetoed, and with such a unanimous support. And to bring it back to us without having it the way it initially was, and at that point, we may have been up for a negotiation, but it should have at least not been vetoed. It should have at least had a chance to be discussed after we had, had, had made that vote on that resolution. Anything else that's issue shoving it down our throats, at least that's where I feel, and some of the people that I talked to. Thank you.
Yes.
We need to come to a compromise tonight on this resolution, because if we're not careful, we're gonna lose this money. So we're all gonna have to come together with a compromise to fix this problem.
I, I concur with Alderman Holcomb, and what I was hoping that we could do is that I still see that we could have a substation at the mall, and that would give us, that would give the mall some constant on, on site there, and put the patrol there, out here, the Armory, and any other, uh, police facilities that they deem necessary to go there. And I think that with that, I believe we can move forward with this resolution, and we can get those things behind us, because we got some other city business that we need to be about. And I think that we could, we could get this done, and I think we can get it done tonight with the amendment of that, and move forward. That's all I have, ma'am.
Uh, I, I, I sort of agree with Mr. Steff there, you know, putting a certain number of patrol at the mall would be sufficient, I think. Maybe not the whole patrol and thing, and five, ten, or fifty, whatever number might be sufficient. And I think that would cover the mall area where most of the people have a desire to cover, and as well, they'll satisfy, discipline for the Armory, and get full use out of the Armory. I think Bill said last time that we could look at this and make any kind of adjustment, we'll look at it.
Right.
And, 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 and.
I just want to say this move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we.
I have no problem with just, how about we just make an amendment to, on line twenty-three, instead of saying the contract with the Pine's Mall. It's to say that something like that will make a commitment to have a substation.
Substation.
Located in the Pine's Mall.
Right.
And just take out that rest of that language without the agreement. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, you're, you're all getting that, and that what I'm, what you want to do is substitute substation. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Line ten, he gonna take out the towel, and then go down to line twenty-three, and take out the, what was it, contract with the Pine Mall.
Mayor, would it be just better to just, just pull this and clean it up and bring it back, instead of discussing it tonight? Come on, don't get me wrong.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Gotta have.
Okay, I'm all for it. Alderman Brown, I'm, I'm speaking, sir. Sir, I'm speaking, and at the same time, this is what Alderman Brown was saying when he first came in. If we go ahead and get something done and get this out the way, it'd be pushing the, moving the city forward. That's our job, that's why we're here. I mean, but we're, we're doing good tonight to, to add to it instead of tear it down. That's what it's all about, about, about moving good legislation forward.
We do.
Right? And if we just build it up instead of tearing it down, we're okay.
Okay, so, correction, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we, we, we build it up instead of tearing it down, the citizens will see what we're doing. We, we tear too many agenda items down before we try to put them in motion.
I, I'd like to make it, I'd like to make a motion to that.
Excuse me, mayor, excuse, mayor, excuse me. No, excuse me, mayor. Excuse me, mayor. Excuse me.
Mr. Chalmers?
In this time, in this second, I understand, I was gonna, I was gonna state what the amendment is, so that I might be able to clarify what discussion. Going in line ten, which is in the top, to, to remove the maintenance of the patrol division and substation. Lines twenty-three through twenty-five, uh, basically you were saying, after the substation, the mayor is saying, authorizing the mayor to negotiate with the Pine's Mall to house a substation. Right, then on the second page, uh, line six, you delete the reference to Patrol Division, just insert substation, and, uh. That's right, you'd want that to say the same thing as, uh, yeah, it would reflect the language that's on the, uh, twenty-three through twenty-five on the first page, so it'd be negotiated. The mall for a presence of substation.
The mall, uh, five, uh, six, and seven would be.
You would say the mayor is authorized, also authorized to negotiate with the Pine's Mall to serve that, so, uh, the substation. And I think it was quite good period there, but if you type it, it has to be approved.
Yeah, are we going to say, uh, since this is supposed to be free of charge, are we saying that this is free of charge?
I don't think that'd be free of charge.
Well, if they want it out there, do otherwise, we just, you know, we just switch it from where we work.
I just think she could negotiate that, though.
Where we are paying now, we are paying for, uh.
Utilities.
Out there.
Right.
Uh, in this other place, and we have a place for them, and then we're gonna split it up, then, then I think it should be.
Because the only thing we were gonna be paying for before was what, utilities?
First three, five years?
First, first three years.
First five years.
First five years.
Right, and we put the whole patrol division out there, but we're not doing that.
Right, but if we're not doing that, we still would be, uh, could be liable for paying utilities?
Could be, but I don't, I've not discussed anything, so I don't know that.
But once you get into that discussion, then you let us know.
Well, now, are we authorized to, to get into the bridge, you know, to start the new thing, or not?
Just to negotiate.
Just to negotiate and, and, and get back with us.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Mayor, I want you to know, thank you. I want you to know I'm very upset, because everybody but Alderman Holcomb has spoken since I had my hand up, and it was okay. If we gonna be in order, we need to stay in order, and then people just figuring out order and just speaking the way they, making motions and all that, and I'm fair. My hand has been up, and I think that I should have been recognized. However, however, on last meeting that we had, uh, Mr. Matthews spoke of, and of course, the mayor too, spoke of time limit, and of course, uh, Alderman Steff has also said the same thing about time limit. Well, it was the same kind of time limit we had when this thing was vetoed before. Also, he did mention, Mr. Matthews mentioned that it possibly could be a, some kind of extension of time, but I'm saying this, it's our money. It's our money. If the bond people don't want us to get the money, then we'll just get somebody else to float the bond. That's all I'm saying. It's, it's a bond money, it's not money the government giving, it's bond money, it's his gonna pay for that. So we right here worried about losing money, and even worried about losing money, it's a bond issue money, you don't lose that. If they don't want to float the bond, then we get somebody else to float the bond for us.
This bond's already floated. This bond's already been bought.
Okay, okay, well, okay.
We've got a deadline to get the job done by.
It was the same deadline, it was the same deadline when, when it was a veto, that's all I'm saying.
Can I say something? The bond has already been floated, and I think that the council, we have come to a compromise, and I think that we all can agree with to move it forward. And I think that's what we ought to do at this point, rather than to hash this thing out and going back, could that. I, I think we just need to go ahead and vote on this amendment, so we can move forward, and get the negotiations started.
Okay, now, on, uh, our, on, uh, this, uh, this, uh, to the city, uh, that we are saying that, uh, the patrol division will be housed at the Armory, and, and the vision that they see fit to put out there.
That's what it should be saying.
That's the amendment that you like to have on it, because.
Right.
Yeah.
The Patrol Division will be housed at the Armory?
Right. Yeah, that's the amendment.
I wanted to say they have the flexibility to put any department that they want in.
No, other, other departments, you talked about the Patrol Division and any other division that the police saw fit to put there. That's what it was stated.
It doesn't say that now, I think that's what you wanted to be amended to say.
Right, that's what we want, yeah, it doesn't say that now, but that's what we wanted amended to say.
Is that correct, as long as you wanted amended to say that?
This is right.
May I speak? May I speak?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, that's in the fourth ward, the Armory, I'm, I'm all for that, but, uh, you, you got to understand, understand, okay, if you go through the, I want you all to go through there when school is out in the evening time, on that road. Now, if they get a call over there, now I'm for a substation over there, even though it's in the fourth ward. Now, if you get a call over there at three fifteen, three thirty, you got those buses in there stopping, you got kids in the road, you got people walking in the street. And these guys come out of there flying, and they got a bank robber across town over on, in, in, just say on the south side, and they come flying out of there. Those buses stopping, I mean. I mean, that, like I said, that's, that's my ward, I understand, but if you go now, I go through that road all the time, and you got kids down there playing ball in the yard, you got people in the street walking. If they come out of there full speed with them blue lights on.
Just, just one second, Lisa.
Okay, what, you, you, you're liable for that. Now, you can, you got the authority to do that, but if you got, it's like, what, what it is, the Melissa League says if you do that, if you hit somebody, it's your fault. You got, the police got the right to turn the blue lights on, but you go through there and them buses stop, them kids playing. Now, you can do that, you got the authority to do that, but if you do that without proper judgment, it's, it's, the police is liable for hitting a child.
Mayor, could I say something?
Yes, yes, sir.
As I understand it, a patrol division, they don't go there and set up. That's where they go and meet and leave and go to their assigned areas. So you're not gonna be calling there, asking for a police patrol car to come out of there, they sitting there waiting on something to happen. They have, they have to be at various locations at their assignment around the city, so they're not just sitting there waiting for something to happen.
Okay, I, if, the only thing I would like to say with this, it goes back to, um, locking a particular department into a particular area. And, and I, I think that's what we were saying from day one, is that we wanted the flexibility to be able to move different departments around. So for example, if you wanted part of the patrol division there, you could have, or if you want the crime scene tech there, you could have that. You could have various departments there, uh, as it being, uh, needed. So I think the flexibility of being able to take away or add to was the, the groundwork of the Army, because it is so big, and you can utilize it for many different reasons. Forward, here's it just.
I think, Mayor, that's what Alderman Brown was saying, is that when it was voted upon, you had a five to three vote, and I think that's what he was saying, you had gotten the majority of the people that support, uh, that, that resolution and that ordinance as to how it would be utilized. And then I think when you go back and you say that two people or three people decided, well, one of the thing we have to kind of look at is that anytime you're compromising, everybody's not gonna get everything that they want. But when you go back and you look at the vote and how that vote was done, and then, then it got vetoed, and I think that we still back at that point, that five people supported it being there. And I think that with the compromise, I think that we ought to be able to go back to that point, and we can move forward, because if you're gonna take part of the patrol division and put a substation out there, then you are putting part of it somewhere else, but I think that because of the magnitude of the Armory, and it has so much to offer, I, I, I can't see it being nowhere else but there, and then having a safe place to park those cars inside of a fence and lock the gate, rather than being sit out there in a wide open area.
Any other discussion?
Okay, did I understand it? Have we reached a compromise?
Right, yeah, we're gonna go on the amendment to.
Right. I think we need to read the amendment.
Okay, yeah, he gonna read it. Or, or are you?
Well, I'm not sure I follow what you said, you would keep, be on page two, uh, line four, at the conclusion, it says National Guard Armory, they got a period, they got a period, they insert a comma. And it does to house the patrol division, or you could say to house a significant presence of the patrol division, another person unless decide, whatever. and other personnel to decide whatever you want to say.
House the patrol division. Okay.
Okay, and you say patrol division without equal application, that that indicates that the whole group would be...
Other than this sub, the, the appointment of the substation group.
We just don't like to say the presence, because if you put three or four out there, then they can say that it's a presence.
Mayor, can we, can...
What you say, majority presence then?
Can we, can we let, can we let Chief Hugh Banks, and, and, and I would, I'd like to hear from Captain Hadley as well. I mean, they, they're police officers.
Why don't we do this?
I mean, really?
We don't want that, it's our decision.
I just think putting a patrol in the armory is not a good decision, I'm sorry.
You can also put bike patrol there with them, but patrol division...
That was not part of what...
What are you saying, what you saying, Bill?
I'm just saying that I think if we could leave the flex, I mean, when, when the Joe Thomas Building gets completed, there may be room for him to put patrol division here in the city, uh, civics and complex, instead of committing that it's gotta go, I just don't like the idea of saying it's got to go to the armory.
Well, every time we say compromise, it always work out the way you, you want it. It's not, it's, it's never a compromise for other people, five, five of the other people. It's always the way you want it, every time we get a compromise.
There's a tremendous compromise for me to agree to the substation in the mall instead of the contract.
Okay, wait a minute.
Okay, let's do this, um... To be able to have the flexibility, because at this point, we don't know how much room, square footage, will be available for the different departments at the Joe Thomas Building. Once they move out the evidence room and things that are in the jail, you're, you'll be able to have a better idea as to the space that will be offered at the Joe Thomas Building. So, the only thing that I'm saying with that is, let it, leave it to where it's flexible, so that if you do have the room at the Joe Thomas Building for the patrol division, then for a, a significant presence, then you can do that, but also have a significant presence at the armory, and along with, uh, a substation at the mall. That creates a win-win, that also allows the police department to be a little bit flexible in how they want to move the departments around.
Mayor, that's, that was my, that was my point, and, because as long as you're not locked into a contractual arrangement or lease, and, and the Joe Thomas and the armory, they're both your sites. That was my, that was my reasoning for not wanting to go and get locked into a five-year contract out there at the mall, then six months down the road, you renovate the Joe Thomas facility, but you can't get your people in there, because we tied in, locked into a contract. We're not locked, we're not tied into a contract whereby that if we got the space, then we wouldn't be able to move our, our patrol division back in its home.
Right. We can always vote to change that.
We can always vote to change that, so we're not locking them in, because it belongs to them, both of these facilities. But that mall belongs to somebody else, and you sign and file your contract, you gonna be liable, you locked into that. I don't care how, how much you add on to the Joe Thomas Building and you renovate it, you won't be able to come out under the contract until that time limit. With the way we're, we're posing it now, they'll be able to, they say, okay, we got the Joe Thomas facility, there's some space been, been released, and this is where we want to house them. I don't see we have a problem with that.
That's what I would like for that amendment to say.
And that, that, that's the point that we're saying, that if the resolution here is so specific, does that give you the flexibility to be able to move? Because it actually is...
But we could, we could do an ordinance and it'll override a resolution.
That's right. But you can do the resolution right now by saying, if there's room, put it in the, do your amendment now, if there's room, when the Joe Thomas Building is complete, some or part of the patrol will move over.
You'll have to put on that.
Right.
Well, okay, this is something I think that might need to be discussed with our police division. They're the ones that's gonna have to make the call, but if the council appropriates the money, right?
Right, to do the renovations.
Okay, so whether housed, is that not an administrative function?
No.
Yes, it is.
She can decide what it is, it's just up to the council to appropriate it.
Right. So then, let's just go back to where you were.
Mayor, may, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if, if we put the patrol division, well, once we remodel the Joe Thomas Building, clean out a space for the patrol division, move them back, now, temporary housing could be for the, the, uh, for the patrol division and a bike patrol at the, uh, well, the, uh, patrol division at the armory temporarily, with a bike patrol, and a substation at the Pine, Spines Mall. Once we clean this, this building out, uh, I think there's be, there'll be room. I got a very, my, I got reservations about, uh, this, because I know how politicians are, if we lock ourselves into this vote tonight, uh, it's, it's hard to move, because we're, we're so busy with everything.
Let's vote that, since y'all wanna, everyone do right there.
So what did we come up with? I mean, is it clear? That's why I wanted to, to, to put it to the side and clear it up, before we bring it back. I, I think this, this...
Is that your order?
I'm a co-sponsor on it, but I'm willing to compromise, you know, if, if possible, to make it right. We gotta look at our citizens as well, now.
Okay, what do we, what do the sponsors want to get?
We gotta move the...
That too.
Amendment, the only part that's been amended is second, it's the part about taking away the contract and making it a substation. You can go ahead and vote on that.
No, the biggest thing was making the substation, and the patrol division would go to the armory. That was the, that was the...
They've already done the, I guess they were...
Can we just, can we just pull it and, and clean it up and bring it back?
Move on this.
Mr. Brown, can you need a vote on the, uh, the initial changes that relates to the negotiation with the Pines Mall to house the, uh, substation?
That's the first, that's the first. That's all.
Right.
Okay, call for the vote on the amendment to the, um, do you wanna read the amendments again?
We haven't amended yet.
This is two.
Okay.
First amendment deals with commending, on the first page, on line ten...
Pick a little louder, please.
Sorry. On the first page, in the title, at line ten, you would delete the patrol division and substitute a substation. Beginning with lines twenty-three, uh, after the phrase "and authorizing the mayor to," you would start "negotiate with the Pines Mall to house a substation," everything else will be struck out from lines twenty-three through twenty-five, and that'll be substituted. Page two, starting there at line four, mayor's author, authorized to negotiate with the Pines Mall to serve as a site for a, for the police department or a police department substation, and you put a period after that. And that's that amendment.
What's the other amendment?
Well, there was a...
This is the first amendment.
Did we read the other one?
Well, we gotta vote on this one.
Yeah, we gotta vote on four, yeah. We need to go and vote on this one, then we can...
Okay, with the, with the changes that were just put before again, um, let's do roll call please.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm not clear on it, and I think most of us are really not clear on that first amendment. Let's just, just, just read it back. We can get it, 'cause I don't think we're clear on it.
I'm not clear on it. Okay, I'll be glad to do it again. Start on the first page, the title page. Line ten in the title, beginning with "authorizing," strike out "the patrol division" and substitute in place of that "a substation," so that it will now read "authorizing a substation to be housed in the Pines Mall." Move down on the same page, beginning at line twenty-three, halfway through that sentence, where it's "authorizing the mayor to," strike out "contract," insert "sub," "negotiate with the Pines Mall," strike out "for a three-year lease with options to renew," all that to the end of the sentence, do away with all that, and substitute "to house a substation." So it will re...
Say it again.
"To house a substation." So it will read after that, "authorizing the mayor to negotiate with the Pines Mall to house a substation." Page two in section one, starting at line four, actually, we'll start at line five, but the sentence will read, "the mayor is also authorized to," and basically to strike out the rest of that sentence, through line seven, and substitute "negotiate with the Pines Mall to serve as a site for a police department substation," period.
Okay, that's the, that's the, that's the first amendment. Yes, sir.
To make contract and the word negotiate, we end up being the same in the end, 'cause if you negotiate something, you don't turn it into a contract. So that's gonna be the same thing, and you're just fooling me.
Negotiate is not a contract.
You just give me a, you know, plane or what, because if the word contract is, actually put the word negotiate, if you negotiate, then you're gonna do a contract after you negotiate.
Not necessarily.
You're gonna negotiate, you want the terms on, and once you do that, they will come back.
Negotiate is gonna be a contract.
No, not necessarily.
They're gonna negotiate the terms, then we'll come back.
Right, before, before a contract is executed. Don't mean because you negotiate, you're gonna have a contract.
No, you don't enter into a contract until you negotiate the terms.
And then, what, what was said in this amendment about the armory building?
Well, we got to get this first part out of the way, this is, this is part one.
This is the first amendment.
This is the first amendment.
If this amendment passes, then we don't need to back it down.
Yeah, you gotta come back.
Yeah, well, I, uh, that, uh, first, we need to understand whether, uh, you, the mayor, you're open to, uh, patrol division to house, because if you're not, well, then, uh, there's no need of us voting on this, and then you're saying that you, that the patrol division will not go to the armory.
So, separate...
This, 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 this is a smack in the face.
What I'm saying is, is that I'm not opposed to either one. What I'm saying is, let the facilities be remodeled, to see how much space that we have, and then be able to make a decision whether to be housed.
Well, if you're not opposed to it, you know, why can't you fix this out if you're starting, uh, saying that the patrol division will go to the armory? Then if there are, there, if, 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 if,[1468.12]
Right, you need to talk, because I didn't hear nothing you said.
But in the meantime, here, and I think that we should amend this to say that the money is allocated for the Joe Thomas Building.
You know, don't confuse the two there.
We can do the Joe Thomas Building and move forward.
Right.
But there's already a motion on the floor, so we need to dispose of that so we can go on to the next, the issue as it relates to the armory or the Joe Thomas, whatever. We need to finish this first, this motion is on the floor first, as it relates to negotiating with the Pines Mall to house the substation. Or either pull it off the floor, either one, pull it off the floor, or either vote on it, exactly.
So, what we got to do is vote on, we have two amendments on the floor.
Just the one.
Just the one.
One, it relates to negotiating with the Pines Mall to house the substation.
So, we need to vote on that amendment.
Yeah, we pulled that.
Going to the Pines Mall to substation.
Okay, we've already got, we have a motion on the floor for the resolution, and we have an amendment.
She's asking for a substitute motion. She's asking for a substitute motion, which is in order.
Okay.
Where it's housing, to move the housing to the mall.
Actually, as a co-sponsor, my position is pull it, clean it up, and bring it back. Now, I don't know what this original sponsor would say. It's really confusing.
It's certainly confusing.
Just one second, the city attorney has a question.
Is my clarification on the substitute motion that Mr. Oliver Walker made?
Could I make a motion that we remove the last motion to kick out the proportion to house the mall?
And it's proper, I would second that. Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
That motion would be to table the motion.
And it is.
The original motion.
That's what the substitute motion is about.
Okay, so I move to table the motion.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded, we table the original motion. Okay, roll call.
Oliver Walker?
No.
Oliver Stamm?
No.
Oliver Walker? Oliver Bowles? Oliver Brown? Yes. Oliver May? No. Oliver Hough? No.
Motion carries.
Like to the amendment.
Okay, roll call on the amendment.
Oliver Walker? Oliver Stamm? Oliver Walker? Oliver Bowles? Oliver Brown? Oliver Ryan? No. Oliver May? Yes. Oliver Hough?
Amendment carries. Now back to the original motion.
Would it be to the original motion?
There's another amendment. Right, there's another amendment.
Okay, that's what I thought was two amendments. Now, the Second Amendment, would you...
The Second Amendment, though, we can make a motion, put it on the floor.
The Second Amendment deals with the assignment of the patrol division to the National Guard Armory. And this is where I'm not sure about your language. It can say either "to house the patrol division and other assigned personnel," period, if your intent is to put the patrol division at, without exception or exclusion, at the National Guard Armory. It can say "to house a significant portion," or "be a primary site of the patrol division." No, it's up to you, whatever you want to say, but it would start at line four on page two.
Scratch that last statement.
Significant or primary?
Primary.
Right.
All right, well, you could, at the end of line four then, where the last word of the sentence is "armory," you put a comma rather than a period, and just say "to house or to be a primary site of the patrol division and other personnel as assigned," period. And if you wanted to, you could also insert something "subject to regular periodic review" to meet public safety needs. Or you don't have to insert that, whatever you want to, or you just want to leave period after "assigned." Okay. All right, so the amendment would read, starting at line four, where it says "Joe Thomas Public Safety Building and the National Guard Armory, comma, to be a primary site of the patrol division and other personnel as assigned," period.
Repeat that, Joe.
It would say "Joe Thomas Public Safety Building and the National Guard Armory, comma, to be a primary site of the patrol division and other personnel as assigned."
Should be S on sites, or just site?
Well, it's just one site, the armory. You're saying it would be a primary site. It would not be the only site, but it would be a primary site.
I'd like to make a motion to that amendment.
Second.
Okay, so properly read and second that the amendment was read, open for discussion?
To be sure I'm clear, Mr. City Attorney, the only part we're changing is in the title. It says "to be a primary site of the patrol division and other needs as assigned."
Which says "another personnel as assigned."
Another personnel as assigned.
To the armory or the Joe Thomas Building?
Armory.
That's the armory. Okay, now, once again, no, it's open for discussion now. It's open now. I asked to pull it, but this is where we at, so let's deal with it.
Ain't no deal with it.
Well, if you put the, yes, it is, that area, if you travel that road during school time, I'm telling you now, you understand what I'm saying?
Okay, let's look at it this way, if there's an offer with the Joe Thomas Building to house the patrol division there and some patrol division in the armory, you're limiting what you can do. You're limiting your flexibility, and that's not what you want.
That's why we said "primary," because that could be selected for secondary reasons, and I think that's why we would "primary" is put in there, so it won't lock you in totally.
Okay, so if you had an offer for your primary to be at Joe Thomas and secondary at the armory?
We have no problem with that.
Because if that need comes up, then because right now you got to go and renovate the Joe Thomas facility, and we're looking to house our people somewhere now, and we think that it's gonna be a proper place, but if once you go back and there's assessment in the Joe Thomas facility, I don't think this council's gonna be fighting you on that situation.
But the whole thing is, is that, the whole thing is, is that it's not, it's an administrative call.
You still get to make that call when that time comes.
Right, that's my point. So, you can't limit, you cannot be exact on where this is going to be, because we have the flexibility, I do, to say that, no, we do have an offer of the Joe Thomas Building, so, yes, we can house the larger portion of the patrol in the Joe Thomas Building.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, ma'am. We ain't trying to, we're not trying to lock you in the way you won't be able to have some flexibility, but I think what we need to do now is to get this vote, this amendment vote on the record, then we can maneuver around once we get it out here, and I'd just like to call for the vote.
As...
It can't be all the way you want it, ma'am. It's the city council.
Okay, roll call.
Oliver Brown? Oliver Stamm? Oliver Walker? Oliver Bowles? Oliver Brown? Oliver May? Oliver Hough? Oliver...
Motion carries.
I move for the resolution with the two amendments.
Second.
Okay, so properly seconded after the resolution, direct to the mayor to say, we're good, I have no questions.
And renovation of the Joe Thomas Public Safety Building and the National Guard Armory as sites for police department agencies and personnel, authorizing a substation to be housed in the Pines Mall, and directing that the bicycle patrol and neighborhood officers be maintained as priorities to the police department.
Sir, roll call.
Oliver Brown? Oliver Stamm? Oliver Walker? Oliver Bowles? Oliver Brown? Oliver May? Oliver Hough?
Thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on to a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Cobar Contracting for work regarding the King Street drainage improvements.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Cobar Contracting for work regarding the King Street drainage improvements.
Move for adoption.
Second.
That's his resolution.
Authorizing the contract with Cobar Contracting for work regarding the drainage improvements. Any discussion?
Here, under this company is about $64,000 cheaper than the next level of this bid. Do we have any history with this company?
Boy, the history is outside of the Bible.
Mr. Matthews, would you like to rest up like this?
As a question, we have, they are a reputable company, they do have their insurances, they have their bonds. They came in about $40,000 less than what we had estimated. We have checked the company out. They are bondable, they have done this type of work, larger work, so we have did the background check on the company. We're just pleased to give something in for cheap. Yes, they submitted a bid, they also submitted past history of projects that they have done. They've been in business for a while. The engineers have called and verified with the past as to their credibility on time, and they have met the standards.
Any other discussion? I'm afraid of this, say I please. Anyone close? Motion carries.